Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being part of our meeting. I'd like to call the Brooklyn City Council meeting in order. Mary Jo, can you please call the room?
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Here.
Sue Brodick.
Here.
Ron Van Kirk.
Here.
Magraine Shaki.
Here.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this time, I will turn it over to Councilor Borowski for our opening.
Thank you, Council President. I'm starting with an opening prayer, Psalm 33:12. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. Eternal God, stir thou our minds and stimulate our hearts with a high sense of patriotism as we approach the Fourth of July. May all that this day symbolizes renew our faith in freedom and democracy. In your Son's name, Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilman. First item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from our last meeting, June 13th. Any comments or questions on those minutes?
Please approve. Second.
To peruse the minutes, Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
Kevin Tansky.
Yes.
Sue Brodick.
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk.
Yes.
Magraine Shaki.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have a public session. Please keep in mind that public session participants shall observe the same rules of decorum and good conduct applicable to members of city council. Speakers must be courteous in their language and avoid personalities. Anyone making personal attacks, profane, or slanderous remarks, or who become disruptive or combative while addressing city council or while attending a public meeting shall be reprimanded or removed from the meeting by the council president. So if anyone in the audience is going to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you'll be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or fewer.
Don McMahon, 9515 Memphis Avenue. I'm here for the, to repeat what I was started last week. I know we all went home and read our First Amendment rights to freedom of speech. You understand, I'm glad everybody understands that today. So I'm just sending a message out to Mayor said I lost in Parma. And she, she made a statement that she was tired of me. I'm kind of tired of her too, but here. This is Deana O'Donnell here. This is the judge. This is the magistrate I had. And there's a few more names on here we all can see. These are people who donated to her campaign. You're on here, Bob. You're on here, Andy. Tony George. I mean, we're all on here. We understand. I don't care, but these are friends of yours. Like I told you before, I can't beat you in Parma because those are your friends. It wasn't a fair trial. You sided me with a residential code, and it's a commercial code. Tried to talk to you, everything, but you know, that's not here nor there. I'm just telling you, it's an appeals. I explained to you about appeals. Now we all know about the First Amendment right too, to freedom of speech. Then you mentioned my tenant is a person, a colored person. He's Honduras. He's not Puerto Rican. It's six hours by plane from one to the other. You mentioned him as colored. Now, in 2022, people of color often is used to refer to the collective group of non-white Americans. It is offensive to single out blacks as colored. That in part is because of the painful segregation history associated with the term prior to the mid-1960s colored-only restrooms, water fountains, and examples of harmful relics of Jim Crow as a South that black people had to fight and die to remove from the American culture. So if you want to talk at home about colored people, just keep it there. You're embarrassing us as a community. We all understand what being embarrassed as a community is. You think that it's a racist thing. I think we need to hire some black policemen. Okay, I'm going to give you an example. You have one on nights and one on days. There's some good people. You don't judge people by the color of their skin. You pull off four thug kids that's riding through our neighborhood to steal stuff. A white guy pulls over, what is the first thing they say? You know, he pulled us over because we're black. We got to segregate this town a little bit. I'm trying to help you get the racism look out of our town. There's not one black person worse than the whole city. You're going to tell me that, oh, it's not on the application? You don't do an in-person interview first? You're making us look bad, Mayor. It's time to get with it. And another thing, this is a pretty sound building. I disagree with the one across the street, but quit spending our money. Like, if it was yours, you wouldn't buy one thing. I've heard from other people that you're a little stingy, but a million dollars to put a roof on a service center? Why don't you, I'd like to look at the money trail. Somebody has to be getting, taken care of. I could build that service center for half a million dollars. I could build it from the ground up and tear it down. It's, it's, you're wasting our money because of the people that you're hiring. You need to get somebody with a good set of eyes to look at this stuff before you break the city. That's, that building across the street will be over budget by 30%. You don't know what you're doing. You need to get good people to help you and quit advising them by yourself. I don't think you're that smart. I'm wanting to work with you. I'm trying to teach you a few things. I've taught you about segregation today, taught you about some other things. I've taught you the First Amendment right too. So you're learning some things. I told you last week about appeals. I know you're an attorney, but like I said, I think you might have slept through that class. You did, I didn't lose you. I can't beat you in your court, but we're going to go to another court because you started this fight. I did. I thank you all for listening to me. Thank you, people.
Rob Slattery, 6600 Bussiris Drive. I may actually put it easy today that now that we have the ice cream truck emergency passed, I'll sleep better tonight. The public nature of the legislative process and rights of citizens to participate and voice their opinions about the process are at the heart of the democratic government. The city of Brooklyn offers a public comment period at open meetings, provides the citizens that they may exercise their First Amendment rights. At the last meeting, we witnessed Councilwoman Shaki violate Mr. McMahon's rights by suppressing his ability to speak. On 12/10/2018, a city employee spoke at a council meeting and spoke against the business I am president of and mentioned it by name. On 6/24/2019, a Cleveland resident spoke at a council meeting, used my name, called me a liar, a bully, and stated I don't like veterans or senior citizens. And then 3/14/2022, the wife of a seated councilman spoke about me using my name several times, stating I violated the law and possibly stole mail from her mailbox. During all three of those events, not one person on council, the mayor, the law director, stopped them or mentioned this so-called council rule. These are perfect examples of selective enforcement and violations of free speech. You are a group of hypocrites who are afraid to hear the truth. This council and administration has censored residents because of the speech criticizes them, and that is totally wrong. This city cannot silence speakers based on their viewpoints or the content of their speech. This city must live up to the values embedded in the First Amendment. Once again, I have to remind you, you work for us. Selective enforcement puts the city and council members in danger of civil action for violating civil rights.
Hello, Victor Ardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. I had to bring up the thing when you mentioned the ice cream trucks. I grew up in, it's, what, 1960, '61 we moved here. Within a few years after that, I remember there was a truck that was like a UPS truck with the big window and everything. I think it was called Mr. Frosty. He had an ice cream cone machine where they pulled out, they made banana splits, all kinds of stuff. So I remember growing up with the bells and the megaphones the whole time. And I vaguely, somebody said somebody got ran over, which they very much might have, which is bad. My other thing is the recycling. Still watch my neighbors at times. The cans are overflowing sometimes. They're packed in a plastic bag. My other neighbor had styrofoam sticking out of the top of it. Anyway, I go to work and are the guys, when they pick the garbage up, are they dumping that or is the garbage truck picking up that instead of the recycling? Out of curiosity. And again, thanks to Biden administration for what they've done to us or for us.
Anyone else want to say for the good and well of the city of Brooklyn? Very good. We'll now move on with reports of council. We'll begin this evening with our recreation board, Councilman Tansky.
Thank you. Public Board meetings for July and August are canceled.
Thank you. Anything else? That was good. All right. Next up is the public safety, environmental, and as well as the financial due together. We had a joint committee work session prior to the council meeting to discuss fire department staffing. That took place at 5:30, so we had some good dialogue with the administration as well as some of our firefighters and our residents. And so we'll be discussing that further as we move through the year. Next up is our planning commission, Councilwoman Sue Brodick.
Thank you. There was a special meeting of the planning commission held on January 21st. The commission considered a conditional request for Urgicare Clinic and in a retail business for Well Now Urgicare at 4630 Ridge Road, as well as a preliminary site plan for the same property. The commission approved both requests with the condition of reviewing the approval six months after the businesses are operating. It is my hope that the members of city council will confirm this conditional use request. Our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting will be July 6 at 6 o'clock. There are several items on the agenda. First is a request from Lad Sign and Lighting for one pole sign at One American Road. We have a request from Brilliant Electric Sign Company for a sign at Progressive at One American Road. A request from Brilliant Electric Sign for a sign package for the city of Brooklyn for multiple locations. A request from the Onnigan Signs Contractors for an updated sign package at BW3 at 5020 Tiedemann Road. A request from CESO Inc. for a final site plan approval for the Well Now Urgicare Center at 4630 Ridge Road. And last, a request from CESO Inc. for a lot split at 4630 Ridge Road. And again, the next meeting is July 6 at 6:00 PM, and it will be in person here in council chambers. That concludes my report.
Thank you. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on the 16th to discuss the following request from Melissa Vindal for a variance of eight feet to the required minimum of 10 feet for the side lot lines for a swimming pool at 8909 Memphis Villa Boulevard. A request from Schramm Signs for additional internally illuminated wall sign to allowable of one for Crumble at 7323 North Cliff. A request from Same Sign Company for additional 140 square foot of window graphic signs to cover stockroom windows at Crumble. And a request from Dale and Cindy Vandero for a variance of 18 inches to the minimum of two feet from the public right-of-way for a fence at 4736 Ridge. Then a request from Steve Lewicki for a 5' 6" variance to the required minimum of 15 feet for adjacent residential structure at 4168 Springcrest. And all of these requests were granted. All right, we'll now move on to our school board liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The school board met on June 20th, which was a Monday. They honored state champ Jenna Young, and there were numerous resolutions that really mostly had to deal with the staffing for the upcoming school year. They also had a presentation on the Ohio checkbook, and they are looking to move forward with that. They amended the Certificate of Estimated Resources, amended the current annual appropriations, and had the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 23 on. Dr. Clarice did stress that he wanted me to share that the school's gratitude for the sign on Hurricane Alley that honors and recognizes Jenna's state championship. Hurricane Alley will be closed to traffic July 14 until July 22, and there are two different timeframes where the track will not be available due to resurfacing, July 5 to July 15, and then August 22 to September 17. And the next meeting of the board is a work session, and that's June 28, 6:00 PM in the treasurer's office. And then their next meeting after that is on Tuesday, July 12 at 6:00 PM in Room 173. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee, the whole met at sick well, it was actually at 6:30 tonight because our previous meeting ran a little bit over. We discussed the following. Resolution 2022-23, this adopts the tax budget for the fiscal year 2023. Then we discussed ordinance 2022-18. This allows for an easement to the city of Cleveland for the installation of a water meter for the city center project. We discussed ordinance 2022-19, and this is the fireworks legislation that was adopted several meetings ago. In that legislation, there was originally a permitting requirement for the city. The administration has asked us to remove that based upon the fact that the state fire marshal's rules have been released in regards to this, and they would carry the force of law, so it kind of takes care of that. So it takes that administrative burden off of the administration. So the committee did recommend that council remove that restriction. Resolution 2022-25 is a job retention and creation grant for Victory Capital Management. This is a very well-respected business here in our city that's been here for quite some time. And what was offered to them was if they maintain an annual payroll of at least $24 million for the lease term, which is three years, and with a minimum income tax withheld of $600,000 for those years, if they reach 90% of that in each of those years, they will be granted a 25% of their income taxes paid in 2022, 20% paid in 2023, and 15% paid in 2024. Each of those will be payable in the years following. And the committee did recommend that council adopt that. Next was resolution 2022-26, and this is a change for the guaranteed minimum price for the city center project and just a few minor changes that were discussed. One was additional network security. This was as we build out the infrastructure for security across the, not only the city center, but city center, but also the rest of, really, the city buildings, building out that infrastructure for that now as opposed to waiting until later. So that was an increase of $22,445. We're going to build an additional wood fence. It ended, currently ends at where the property line ends. It will now extend the rest of the street over there, so the last five or six residents there will have a fence that goes all the way along there as well. And then the city signage that was budgeted for a capital budget has now, just those funds have now been shifted to city center project, so those ones are now part of that. There were some drawing modifications for access control. That was a safety mechanism for requested by our jailer. And there was one more proposed change for additional speakers in the council chambers, but that recommendation was denied. Ordinance 2022-20, this grants an easement for CEI for providing electricity for the city center project. Then Miranda, our animal control officer, was here to request ordinance 2022-22, and this would establish a position of part-time kennel manager. It's kind of a unique position that she has where we share services with her for, here in Brooklyn, as well as Parma Heights. And there's been a large influx of animals that she's taken, and it's got a little bit more than she can handle on her own. So she's asked for a request for a part-timer, and the committee did recommend that council adopt this legislation. It will be an estimated cost of about $9,000 to $15,000 annually, and we will share those costs with the city of, did I say Maple Hills before? If I did, I meant Parma Heights, the city of Parma Heights. For some reason, I stuck in my head there for a second. And then lastly was ordinance 2022-21. This is amending Section 72103, hours noises of the codified orders of the city. And this would permit ice cream truck licenses to make sounds. This is a legislation that Mr. Borowski introduced, I guess, many years ago. Those, those ice cream trucks essentially were outlawed, not the trucks themselves, but the fact that they played music. And 1952, I think, is when you said it was, which was the year that my dad was born, so that was, that was quite a while ago. And, but now it will, if we change this, they'll be able to come back into the city and provide those services to our residents. The committee, the whole meetings do take place normally at 6:15 prior to the start of all regularly scheduled council meetings. It takes place here in council chambers. All are welcome to attend. That takes care of all of our reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We'll now move on with reports of council. Begin this evening with Mr. Selhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Tomorrow's the next fresh fruit and produce giveaway over at St. Elias. Starts at 3:30. Please do not arrive too early. Some people make it a habit to be there an hour and a half, two hours ahead of time. Keep Brooklyn Beautiful. We're still doing cleanups. You can volunteer for them through volunteer.kab.org. If you put it in a radius of five miles, you'll find up, find cleanup dates that we have scheduled. They're either a Saturday or Sunday. They'll be in July, August, September, and October. Thank you to the 42 people from Nestle's who volunteered, volunteered through Keep Ohio Beautiful. They were with us on Friday, June 17th. They had a number of locations throughout the city doing some work over at the senior center, around here in Memorial Park and stuff, so their help is appreciated. And just in general, have a safe summer. Please enjoy the concerts and movies that are happening over at Memorial Park. The Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce will be holding its picnic in the park on Saturday, August 20th. Event starts at 1:00 PM. There'll be fireworks at dusk. The schools are involved with it. We're going to have some stuff with army recruiting, trying to do some obstacle course stuff. So try and make it a family fun thing and actually just get people back out together. On the side streets, when you're driving around in the summer, please take your time, slow down. If there are parked cars, wait if there's uncommon, uncommon traffic coming towards you. You just never know when someone may come pop out from behind the car, especially if it's a small child. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Selhertz. Next up is Mrs. Pucci.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the zoning code open house, and thank you, Jeremy, for all your efforts. It was mostly the same residents who have been attending these meetings, although there were a few new faces, which I think is a good thing. Please try and stay informed and reach out to any of us with any questions or concerns you may have. Again, nothing is final. We're still working through the process, and we expect to be on the ballot next May. Regarding Victory Capital, just a quick comment. We normally do have a longer retention period for the jobs beyond the years where we're paying the incentive. However, this was not able to be accomplished this time because they leased their space and they are signing a three-year lease. I'd like to thank everyone who participated in the finance and safety committee meeting earlier today, and thank Chief Paul and Director Ragus for providing the requested information. And I'd also like to thank the firefighters who attended and participated. Our police and fire are the most critical services that we provide, and the safety forces are always at the top of our surveys whenever we survey residents. Our businesses also appreciate our safety forces. Our budget reflects our priorities and values, and I think we just need to put our heads together and figure out a way how to resolve this issue. Summer is here, and our kids are out and about playing, riding their bikes, and unfortunately, they're not always as careful as we would like them to be. So please slow down a little bit and use caution and watch out for our children. Thank you. That completes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Borowski.
I will follow Andy with the St. Elias food giveaway tomorrow. Again, don't show up too early. I also want to commend all the residents that put on a good garage sale this past weekend. I also want to say thank you to Charlene for always reaching out to me and my wife about the garage sales. And I just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Fourth of July. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky.
Thank you. Just want to bring up the legislation that will be passing. We got hours of operation during these fireworks now, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So that means Chief Milky will be bored after 11:00 PM because he won't have to have anybody go out there and chase people. Sure. So just keep in mind those hours. We'd like to wish all the residents and their families a very safe and happy Fourth of July and hope everyone has a great summer. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Tansky. Next up, Mrs. Brodick.
Thank you. First, I would like to give a belated congratulations to Jenna Young and also her family. I was here at the last council meeting. Every time I see her picture or her big smile, I picture the first grade Jenna Young that I remember, and I'm so glad to see her succeeding. Also, just a few thank yous. I'd like to say thank you to the building department. I also thought the garage sale weekend was quite a success, and it seems to be expanding every year. I also appreciate the information from the service department. If you have things that you didn't sell that you would like to dispose of, word is that you could just put it out with your regular trash. You don't need to call for a special pickup this week. And I think that's a great service because I'm sure not everybody sold everything. I'd also like to thank the firefighters. I was part of the safety, the joint safety and finance meeting. I appreciate hearing. I am not going to say that I, in my first term, understand everything about running the city. I understand very little, but am eager to learn. And every meeting, I learn more, and the more I hear, the more I learn, and I really appreciate hearing from the firefighters today. And last, I would like to thank Director Abruzzi. I've been walking a lot through Marquardt Park. It looks fabulous. I love seeing all the families there. I saw a big community picnic under the pavilion the one evening I was going through. The new fitness equipment is very engaging. Right now, all I've seen are some young kids on it, so I'm hoping more people will stop by and add a little fitness routine to their evening walk also. And that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ryan Chalk.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First off, as Andy mentioned, we do have cleanup scheduled this summer before our next council meeting, so I just want to get the dates out there. Saturday, July 16 at Ridge Park Square. Sunday, July 31 at Fifth Third Bank at Tiedemann. Saturday, August 13 at Dave's Supermarket at Ridge and Denison. There is actually a Welcome to Brooklyn sign. One part of the street, across the street from Dave's, is Brooklyn and often forgotten about because there's not residents living over there. Sunday, August 28 at Memorial Park, and Saturday, September 10 at Giant Eagle. Just a reminder, they do all happen from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. Andy had given the registration site earlier, but you can also just show up the day of. Registration just helps us with numbers and how much supplies to have. Also, talking about what Andy and Aaron had mentioned in regards to Bubba's Yard, Community for Solutions had five things, five things you need to know this week that talked about hunger in adults age 30, or age 60 and up. As part of a temporary COVID-19 programming, all Ohio households are receiving, that are receiving SNAP, have been receiving temporary emergency allotments as well. And when this does end, the adults that are 60 and above will suffer the most from the lack of extra funds to purchase foods and healthy foods. A few takeaways of the interviews that they did around the entire state included, all interviewees reported regularly relying on family, friends, or food banks to meet their food needs, and nearly all interviewees reported they'd regularly skipped meals or rationed foods. So this is a serious problem. It is something that Ohio is trying to help solve in one way when it approved the elderly simplified application process waiver that begins July 1 this year. And this program increases administrative efficiencies and decreases barriers for these older adults and disabled households without earned income in being able to receive SNAP benefits at all. So, you know, we do have the food giveaway once a month here in Brooklyn. We do see a lot of households both in Brooklyn and outside, but it is not just young families with kids. It is, you know, older adults as well, and every age, every race, every gender, every type of household that's affected by this. And finally, I know Kevin had mentioned it earlier, but I am hoping that now we're allowing fireworks one day a year between 10:00 AM, 11:00 PM, that residents can follow the law, can only, you know, we'll shoot them up during those times, and that I'm hoping our officers are a little less lenient on the warnings. And now that we do have one day and several hours, so we're not hearing them the entire month of July. That ends my report.
Thank you. Just to echo a couple of things, I want to thank the residents for the garage sale. My wife actually helped with one in our house. It was a lot of fun. Well, it's over. Probably the most fun part, but now the stuff's out of my garage now. But there, there are a couple of places that if you have stuff that's left over, that you can take them to. I believe- I believe Savers takes stuff over off of Ridge Road as well, there's a place that we drop a lot of our stuff off over in Fairview Park called Common Threads. So if it's still, you know, fairly good stuff that you hate to throw away but don't really want having around your house, there are some places that you can drop those off so someone else can receive some benefit from them. Also, in regards to the budgeting decisions for capital items that we do here in the city, whether it's the city center project, or roads, or any other capital expenditure, all of those items are discussed and decided upon at our annual budget work sessions. There are always three scheduled, we usually complete everything in two, but this year they're dated October the 17th, November the 7th, and then November the 21st, and those are, the last couple of years have been held over in the Brooklyn Senior Center. I imagine we will probably stay over there from going forward. But at that time, it's when council discusses the various budgets from all the different departments, everything from capital needs to staffing, to larger projects like the city center project. And then once that's decided, there's a very, actually, long process that goes out in order to decide who gets the bidding, gets to do the work. For example, roads is the largest, usually the largest expenditure we have every year. We usually budget between $1 and $1.3 million roughly, at least since I've been on council due roads. Those will go out to bid, we try to get those out early, that's why we do the budget process when we do it, because the earlier you get out, the workers are looking for work, the vendors are looking for work, and so we get those out, there's a bidding process that goes out, everyone turns in their bid, and then we always accept the lowest and best bid, that's how the city works, and that's the, that's the case for all the capital projects. And so those meetings aren't public, it would be great to have more people attend those. Again, that's October 17th, November 7th, and November 21st, and that's how capital items are budgeted for. If there are any changes, like for example, we'll vote on one here in a second, there's a change in the city center project for the additional fencing I mentioned in the committee the whole. That will be brought before council, council will discuss it, and then we'll vote on that change here momentarily. So that's kind of how that process works. I do wish everyone a happy Independence Day, coming up here in a few short days, the weather looks great, so please enjoy time with family and friends, but also to, as is already mentioned, please stay safe, and as we wish America a happy birthday. All right, that's all that I have this evening, and I'll.
Mr. Van Kirk, may I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
With the talk of fireworks, do you know if we got any calls on fireworks over the weekend? I know in my neighborhood they started and I got one call yesterday.
Unfortunately, I was off today.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, council president. Just to add to what Ron mentioned, there is, we do still offer Simple Recycling here in the community. So, right now, you know, they don't function how they used to. What you have to do now is go onto simplerecycling.com and schedule a time, it usually takes about a week or two weeks out. But if you know you have stuff in your basement that you're trying to donate, that's another good option. And they, they'll pick it up right in your front door, and you don't even have to use those Simple Recycling bags anymore, you could just put it with a bag with a note saying Simple Recycling, they'll pull in your driveway and take the items. I also want to remind everyone that I will be having a community meeting next Wednesday at 6:30 in the Grand Pavilion. That will be followed by the Scooby the Movie, that is a repeat, it got rained out, that will start at 7:30. Also, I will have a coffee with the mayor on July 8th at 9:00 AM in the senior center. I have other meetings scheduled for the summer, so take a look at the newsletter. Also, I think that the rec center did an amazing job of doing a great summer lineup, so keep an eye on that. And they, they post those, and that should have been in the last newsletter. So we have about five more concerts scheduled for this summer, a couple more movie nights. So just take a look at social media or the printed newsletter that you should have received last week or the week before. And hope you, I hope to see you out there. I hope everyone has a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well now with all the reports of directors, excuse me, we have just one this evening, Mr. Ragus.
Good evening, just two updates from me tonight. The first update is for the May 2022 financial report. In relation to the general fund, overall revenues are 44% of estimated amount, 18% less than in prior year due to a decrease of income tax revenue of $1.6 million. The substantial, the majority of the income tax decrease is related to non-recurring revenue they received last year but are not receiving this year, and also large employer withholding loss that we're, we're realizing this year. So income tax is down $1.6 million, and overall revenue is down 18% from last year. On the commitment side, overall commitments are 53% of the budgeted amount and 3% more as compared to last year. Income tax revenue that, that we received this month, we received our graded distributions for June, total distributions are $1.48 million, $223,000 less than last, than June of 2021. Excluding any one-time or non-recurring revenues, we're actually down $311,000 from June of 2021. Of that $311,000 withholding accounts for a loss of $290,000, and the rest are a result of net profit and individual taxes. So majority of losses for June, distributions for MDR are due to withholding losses. And also, I updated city council, our 2021 financial audit is complete. And due to, due to the results of the audit, we're anticipating that we're going to be receiving the utter state award of distinction for a third time in the past four years. So that concludes my report tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ragus. Also, thank you for the, all the additional work for the committee, that was a lot of work, so thank you for doing that as well.
Thank you.
I don't have any other directors, but does any of the directors have anything they need to add before we move on? Okay, very good. All right, we'll move on with our legislation for this evening. The first item we have is a council confirmation for the confirmation of conditional use for the well-known urgent care.
Move to grant the conditional use?
Second.
To confirm the conditional use, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-23, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2023. Any comments or questions?
Move to adopt?
Second.
To adopt, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
The next two ordinances are on second reading. Ordinance 2022-16, approving the plan of operation and governments for the NOPEC Natural Gas Aggregation Program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing a gas aggregation program as a NOPEC member and declaring emergency. Ordinance 2022-17, authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program pursuant to the section, to the section 429.27A1 of the Ohio Revised Code jointly through NOPEC and as a NOPEC member. On second reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules is ordinance 2022-18, authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to the city of Cleveland for the installation of a water meter vault necessary to supply water to the city center project. Comments or questions?
Introduce by all to suspend the rules.
Second. To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
Ordinance 2022-19 is on second reading, but hope to pass by suspension of the rules, amending section 151904 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances Entitled Possessions, Sale or Discharges, Discharge Prohibited, Exemptions, and Declaring Emergency. As was mentioned, this change would remove the requirement for a permit for the Fourth of July fireworks.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-26, amending resolution 2022-12, approving a construction budget and authorizing execution of a guaranteed minimum price amendment for the city center project and declaring emergency. I will make a motion that we amend this in the fourth whereas, the amount from, new amount will be $24,646,521. That same amount will be also be under the eighth whereas, and the last one will be under section one. So make a, make the motion to amend.
Second.
To amend, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-26, amending resolution 2022-12, approving a construction budget and authorizing execution of a guaranteed minimum price amendment for the city center project and declaring emergency. I will make a motion that we amend this in the fourth whereas, the amount from, new amount will be $24,646,521. That same amount will be also be under the eighth whereas, and the last one will be under section one. So make a, make the motion to amend.
Second.
To amend, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
And just as a note, the amended portion of this that we changed was to add the pricing for the additional fencing that I talked about in the committee the whole report. Ordinance 2022-20, authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to the Cleveland Electrical Illuminating Company for the providing of electricity to the city center project.
Introduce by all to suspend the rules?
Second.
To suspend the rules, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
To adopt, Andy Selhards?
Yes.
Kathy Pucci?
Yes.
Erin Borowski?
Yes.
Kevin Tansky?
Yes.
Sue Grodick?
Yes.
Ron Van Kirk?
Yes.
Magraine Shaki?
Yes.
Amending section seven, this is an ordinance 2022-21, amending section 721.03, hours, noises of the Brooklyn Codified Ordances to permit ice cream truck licenses to make sounds.
Introduce by all, suspend the rules?
Second.